I'm sorry, I'm using Verizon time on the TV, whatever the heck that is. A good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today's Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, tax day. It's seven o'clock. We please start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, the tax assessor is online. I hope she did her taxes.
I did my taxes.
Um, okay, we'll begin. Do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none. Any correspondence?
No.
Okay, uh. Technically. No, we don't actually have it yet. I was gonna say, um, we know that there was a, um, a positive report coming our way, but we have not received it yet. Okay, positive eight twenty-four for the, uh, sale of nineteen Trobridge. Okay.
If I may, um, I checked the minutes and they, the minutes reflect our positive report that they didn't include their turn out on me that I asked them to, so I'm asking them to revise it, but yes, they did.
In the letter, they'll have whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll ask them for that.
Terrific. Okay. Uh, approval of minutes. Um, I would accept a motion to the approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from April first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I accept a, uh, motion to approve the Board of Selectmen annual town budget meeting minutes from April second, two thousand twenty-five.
So, second.
Any discussion about the town meeting? Uh, I will say that, um, with, uh, one of our resolutions, we're going to address here a little bit. It's, it just says that the town council of regular resolutions, but there was, uh, a little glitch in one of the resolutions with respect to, um, whether we're gonna accept installments for tax payments and more and more. We're gonna revisit that tonight. It's not actually recorded in the minutes, but just worth mentioning. So I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I would accept a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen special meeting minutes from April second, two thousand twenty-five. So.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any abstentions? Okay, we'll go. Got a hundred percent on that. Uh. Okay, as far as the reports, I'll, I'll keep it somewhat brief. Um. On Friday, I signed an agreement with a company called Tyke. It's spelled like Tyche, T Y C H E. And what they're gonna provide for us, as you know, the, uh, planning, um, planning and zoning director has retired, Beth Commander. She's been filling in on a temporary basis, just we got somebody. Uh, the market is really, really tough right now. I'm finding a trained town planner. Tyke is a, is a company that has, um, town planners and has served as an interim planner in a lot of towns across the state, especially on the east side of the state, and also Hartford. So they're gonna fill in for us for, uh, you know, up to, we have a thirty-day notice when we can get them out until we find some. But they're basically, you know, um, give us all our planning and, and zoning expertise. They're gonna be there to uh, address the board, uh, to review things with that, but it's everything that a current planning and zoning person does. So I just kinda wanna say we did find that. It sounds like a really great opportunity. Uh, they'll also help us with respect to kinda giving us best practices of things happening in other towns across the state. You know, kinda compare ourselves. So that is, uh, on, uh, going on.
Is that your company from Vernon?
Yes, it is. Coming from Vernon, Connecticut. Uh. We're working on a, um, an engineering contract. We, we're not there yet with tie and bond to look at doing a parking lot engineering for the west side of the building that we've come and spoken about. It's just ongoing, but we, we've gotten it back. It's just not ready to bring before you guys yet. So you'll probably see it the next meeting or, or sooner. Um, last up, we had a, um, a resignation from Sustainable Bethel. Uh. Katie Troy, I should say Catherine Troy, has resigned. Uh, she's done a really, really incredible job on Sustainable. Just wanted to, you know, kinda publicly, and we'll talk to her later, I'm sure, but say thank you for everything that she's done. It is a Democrat position, so we'll be going to the town committee and asking for somebody to fill it. Those are only three items, I think, that I wanted to bring forward tonight. Um, any questions? Oh, one last thing. The, uh, the street sweeper has been an issue. It was broken down. Uh, we got it on the road. Things were going well. It broke down again. I guess yesterday before, uh, brake line. It's fixed. The company that was supposed to fix it in the first place, I guess, didn't do too good a job. So we're negotiating that invoice, but they did come out and get it fixed. They'll be back on the road tomorrow. Uh, we have a different fellow doing it right now. Nelson's doing it. He's doing a bang-up job. Um, I just got a compliment from somebody, uh, that they were out in the end, um, the business park, the industrial park, and, uh, he's doing it really good. So I just put that out there to everybody. That's it. Um, okay, so I'll have, um, I'd like to make a motion that we add one item to the agenda, and it's consideration uh, of the sale of nineteen Trobridge Drive. Uh, we'll put that uh, right before setting a date and time for the special town meeting. Uh, do I have a second? Any questions about where we'll put that or anything? Uh, with that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Would Mary add that to the agenda after consideration of license agreement for A.T. Booster and before date and time for special town meeting? Thank you. Okay, uh, no old business and new business. So first up, uh, consideration of expenditures for Bethel Volunteer Fire Department for sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars and Stony Hill Fire Department for twenty-five thousand two hundred for SCBA bottle replacements in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um. So I, I guess I have one question. I know we added this to the agenda. Is this actually, uh, from your actual budget? Like, it's already in your budget, these two items? Or is this something that's additional?
Uh, if I may, the, so the capital budget, Brad and, and, uh, had a capital budget, that is in that capital budget.
Okay.
Previous.
Right.
We've also submitted as a revised ten-year capital budget coming off the fire commission, uh, agenda and plan to try to get full visibility to what's coming. Um, and you'll see on that revised overall capital plan, we have like categories, department to department. We have, uh, vehicle tire replacement, every vehicle. How many years is it gonna happen at? How many tires it's gonna take? Uh. The, the trucks themselves with their, uh, expected age and replacement time. So. Uh, but yes, those two items you just mentioned were in our original.
Your original capital budget or not in your budget budget? Cause I don't, were there SCBA bottles at all in your actual regular budget? Like, I know you had turnout gear in the regular budget.
The bottles were in capital.
The bottles are in capital. Perfect. Just double checking because I wanna make sure it was actually.
And there are, there are a number of categories that have been in the operating budget that I, we moved to the capital budget, cause I think that makes more sense.
Right, okay. No, I just double checked. Cause it did, it did, it talked about this being the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I just wanna make sure we're talking about capital. Yeah, but not a budget. It's okay.
Did Bethel bring their quote?
It's, it's, so it's have one quote and you guys are divvying up the bottles? Is that what I'm saying? Oh, no.
That's the Stonehill.
That's the Stonehill.
Same, same.
You're asking for sixteen thousand eight hundred. They're asking twenty-four thousand. So I don't think it's the same. How many bottles are mine?
We, our total right now is fourteen.
Buying fourteen?
I did, like, they kind of, okay, okay, but I just say.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please. We were able to, uh, significantly knock the price down. It's a significant price increase April first. And, uh, we're able to ask the vendors to, uh, help us out with that.
Three, you said fourteen.
They responded.
And you said fourteen bottles?
It's fourteen.
Are you getting the same price they are? Because that's, that's nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five.
Mike? That price that we just talked about there, that's the, uh, the pre-price increase.
I would.
So you should be getting twelve bottles when I'm looking at it, right? Cause each bottle is one thousand three hundred and sixty-six?
Yeah, we get fourteen if it comes down to twelve. I understand where that went. But I'm pretty sure that the price that, uh, was quartered just for April three, April last week.
For sixteen.
It was a significant price increase, ten percent.
For sixteen thousand eight hundred, you're saying you're getting fourteen bottles? That's what you guys were questioning.
Should be about right.
Are you getting it from the same place as Stony Hill?
Twenty, fourteen through sixteen is about right.
Are you guys getting it for the same, same price? Cause you guys are paying thirteen sixty-six eighty-one, according to your quote, for more bottles.
We're getting, you're getting them from Triple Eight, it's the same price. Right, um. I mean, it doesn't have a time, it's people first, it's supposed to go. Yeah, that's exactly what it is. And that's the updated quote that I just got. I just got that done again.
Okay.
This quote, they were twelve hundred.
Oh, this quote was done on March third, twenty twenty-five.
And that's the price that they're holding to right there.
So this is from March.
Okay, I mean, the, um, Chief McCos, I just wanna make sure you get what you're looking to get, but it's, but sixteen eight is the number.
Yeah, I, I, we're okay.
Okay. And yours is twenty-five, two. Which, of course, remember, we're gonna be sending this along to the, uh, Board of Finance is what we'll be doing. Um. What do you think?
Just in the future, just for like housekeeping, I really just appreciate a quote. You know, when we're asking to spend sixteen thousand dollars in tax paper money, I just wanna see, see it on paper. So, you know, there's no ifs, and then, you know, two months down the road, you said, well, we're getting fourteen bottles, but they're only covered twelve. You know, and I'm not picking on you. I know you're busy, but just, just wanna see a quote. You know, when people, people ask for money, that's.
For, for the Board of Finance, I'd recommend like having a quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, just have the quote.
And maybe you guys get your.
Actually, we're moving towards both departments wearing the same stuff from the same people, right?
At the same time, yes.
Right? So we get the collective, the collective pricing. Also directionally, you know, probably proving to have a representation for.
Well, we can provide that.
Yeah.
We can help.
Be very helpful. It's big dollar, I can start it.
Yeah.
And I, I could clarify that, uh, thirteen, I should like, um, you know, the original request for all these airbags were acted September of nine, of two thousand twenty-one. And trying to keep, um, the estimated cost of those airbags, which included bottles, masks, and, uh, the subsequent COVID delay and, and manufacturers, it, it's things.
I'm not questioning the need at all.
Oh, I, I know that.
All, all I'm saying is bring me a piece of paper with the number on it. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Right out the window, and I struggled the last two weeks to make sure we were.
Do you wanna do it in one motion or do you want separate motion?
Um.
Can we do it in one motion?
We, I think we can, because it's one, it's one, one, one spec, it's coming out of, uh, capital non-recurring. It's, would you like to make a motion?
All right, I make a motion, uh, that we take out of capital non-reoccurring uh, for the purchase of SCBA bottle replacements. The first being for sixteen thousand eight hundred for the Bethel Volunteer Fire Department. And the second amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred for the Stony Hill Fire Department.
Okay.
Oh, and I mostly take it up capital.
You said it right. Yep, you got it. You nailed it. Any other further discussion? With that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Outstanding. Um, okay, next is consideration of four thousand dollars for six tires for engine six for Bethel Volunteer Fire Department to come out of twenty-five, twenty-six capital plan as well. Um, so what's the scoop with the tires there? Were these all here from last year too, or is this, okay. Um, I saw Brendan Ryan here. I'm just curious, these are not new tires, just to make it easier to pull engine six in the fire truck.
No.
We'll make sure nobody's cheating here. Okay. Um. So it was in the capital plan last year. I'm looking to do it this year. I, I don't have any issue. Have some thoughts? I see. They tie tires to tires and it's, it's decided.
Again, yeah, again, just bring the quote. So we know, you know, where are you getting your tires from? Blar and Melli.
Please, uh, please get the quote and bring it between the Board of.
Yeah, when you go to the Board of Finance, make sure you have all the paperwork.
Yeah.
I had your quote, I don't know where it went. I mean, I had it. I see your face.
Does Blar, do they match the state? Do they match the state that Blar and Melli?
Yeah.
Yeah, they buy on the state. They buy on the state.
Cause I know they do something to police. Pretty much like you do in seven years, it's a seven-year replacement.
I'm glad about a local business matches that, so we can buy it from a local company.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Okay, I'll make the motion with that. I recommend that we, excuse me, with that, um, I move that we recommend the amount of four hundred, excuse me, four thousand dollars for six tires for engine six uh, to come out of capital non-reoccurring. Um, actually, I'd recommend to the Board of Finance, how's that?
Yeah.
The amount of, uh, four, four, I don't wanna give four hundred thousand dollars. Do you remember when I take five million away from schools?
Richie, you'd second that.
You'd be like, four hundred thousand dollars. Four thousand dollars for six tires for engine six, the Bethel Volunteer Fire Department. Um, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, without further, that's all favorites. Aye, aye. Motion carries. Okay, so next up, uh, yes.
I don't believe you referred, um, the first item to the Board of Finance's sub bottles.
Oh, we just, we just, I, I think we just should recommend it out of capital non-reoccurring. Um.
Do you want me to amend my motion?
So would that, would that actually be technically, we could say, um, I move that we, we have a motion to reconsider the other item with, uh, respective expenditures for the fire department's SBA models. Um, do I have a second?
So I am.
Okay, I'm all in favor of reconsidering?
All right.
Aye, okay, so that's now on the table again. The same motion, you took to remake it. Amended.
I, I amended to include, uh, recommend to the Board of Finance.
That okay with you there, counsel?
Yes.
Okay.
Mary takes copious notes.
That, you say second, second. Okay, second, so then with that, I'll try my, it's all in favor, say aye. Aye. And motion carries. Thanks, Melanie. Um, okay, so consideration and application of deferred assessment increases for twenty Trobridge Drive. Uh, we do have our economic development director here. You wanna kinda just shed some light on the big picture here?
So, um, you all may be familiar that we have, you know, a deferred assessment, each of the ordinance that allows any businesses to, um, defer taxes on new, uh, commercial development. So we received an application from Vintage and Precinct, and I see they're the new owners of twenty Trobridge Drive. To compete with this company.
Yeah.
Um, and they are, um, constructing a thirty thousand square foot residential building. Um, and they, I guess, made a cost is three to five million. And the applicant was looking for a hundred percent deferral of the increased assessment for a period of seven years. Uh, based on the estimate of construction costs, um, and the review from the zoning and zoning director, they are eligible for that. Um, but after, um, careful consideration, the Economic Development Commission does not recommend approval of the requested deferral. While the commission acknowledges the significant investment proposed by the applicant, it also recognizes that the town has already made considerable investment in the development of the expansion properties. Given rising municipal costs and ongoing budget constraints, deferring an anticipated increase in tax revenue could pose an additional strain on town finances, ultimately impacting taxpayers. As such, the commission does not believe that further incentives are prudent. Um, so that is the recommendation, and, um, according to the ordinance, uh, you can, um, you can approve that recommendation, you can reject it, or return the application back to the EDC for, for your information.
Thank you, yes, appreciate it.
See any reason to go against their recommendation?
I, I, I don't either. I mean, to the point. They've, they've run this project pretty well. I mean, we know all the, the money we put into this. Uh, the properties were sold with that in mind to some degree. It's a little different than, you know, the incentive we used recently coming downtown and other things. I, I would understand that too. So. I would not, I would, I would go with what the EDC says. Rich, you have any thoughts?
Well. That, um, not the full amount, but, um, I would be in, um, thoughts to give something to, um, their, investing as significant money in their account here. Um, they did purpose, so I have less. Building a trillion dollars. That's the only thing I know. Um. Is, is there any, if we send it back to EDC, would they negotiate something different or this, or with the Board of Fight, not the Board of Finance, but the Controller's Office and the First Selectment's Office come to a, a resolution on something like that?
They came back with a recommendation of a deferral amount and a timeframe. Then the EDC could reconsider that. I mean, ultimately, you are the decision maker. Um, so, you know, the only other thing I would add to that is if we, if we create a, uh, a tax deferral for this property, then we have three other profit properties. So you have to know that you're setting that precedent. So you have to just take into consideration that we would probably have to follow the same methodology for the other three properties.
Were they aware, were they aware of the tax deferral program when they purchased the property? Was that ever mentioned?
No, it wasn't.
I just don't think it's a good look. I mean, we have tons of seniors in town who invested their whole lives in the town of Bethel. And we can't afford to give everyone a tax break. I appreciate the investment, but you know, they knew what they were doing when they bought the lot. They were planning on building the development. I just, I don't, I don't think it's.
The other part of this deferral that, I mean, the way I've understood them, the real benefit is what is, is not even as much when you build them. Like, when you read, this was a blank page. This was just an open set of land. So we're just, it's not like we're taking a building that, like, like Carol Lucy's did with the liquor store, where it was, or was that, there was the building, there was, uh, what was it? A dry cleaners and all that sort of stuff. They tore it down, they rebuilt it. Property was significantly higher, but it was about redoing a building that was already there. Even with what happened back here, technically, there was a building on the property and we were having them, you know, up, up it.
Yeah, and, yeah, and part of the idea of the tax deferral will to, um, incentivize that type of.
Right, right, versus building something to begin. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm silently not in favor of passing one deferral, but.
I, I'll make the motion that we take the economic development's commitments recommendation and we, uh, deny the referral.
Okay, and I'll say it. Yeah, okay, so any further discussion? I know we're too, okay.
I mean, is, is this the final no, or they could always go back for something else?
This isn't, yeah, this isn't no. And it was, it was basically, we're looking at three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, seven, sorry, three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars over seven years. Um.
No, that was a significant amount of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should have.
Right.
Okay, and I'll just say, you could, um, you could recommend a deferral amount percentage or deferral timeframe, cause it's up to seven years and up to a hundred percent. So just because they qualify for that category, you could recommend less of a deferral years-wise as well as, um, because.
Yeah.
Materially, so.
You, you guys could have recommended that.
We could have as well.
Which you did not.
We did not.
Okay. Okay, with that, we have a motion on the table. Uh, with that, I'll try my minds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Yes, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Very much. And thank you for the objective opinion regarding the whole.
Thanks, James. Appreciate what you do.
Okay, um.
You guys can leave if you want. You guys don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, it's more fire.
Don't feel like, don't feel like you guys have to.
Okay.
I mean.
Next to my brain refreshments. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks.
Felt bad to see you guys also.
So now, Ryan?
Not you, chief.
You'll have your tires on six, maybe at least your. All right. I'll tell these guys. Actually, uh, we, we can still do that. Let's see here, um.
We're two away from us. We're at the consideration of a cat, tax recovery, but a compliance engine solution.
Yeah, tho- those are actually very, very quick. Let me just talk about, uh, compliance. Uh, so first up, um, I'll just say, uh, I, I move that we, uh, there, um, I recommend that, uh, first we authorize the town of Bethel to enter into the agreement with Bryce LP, subject to review approval of Town Council, and allow Daniel Lee Carter's first selectman of the town of Bethel to execute the agreement with Bryce LP, authorize any other acts or actions as reasonably necessary, including execution of contract revisions and modifications, which he may deem appropriate to facilitate the purposes for which the said contract was intended. You have a second? Okay, there's a motion on the table. Bryce LP, what they do is they basically, they provide sprinkler system, um, support. It's, uh, it's free for us. It's paid for by a third party. The only cost that comes up to us is if we discontinue the service and then we wanna re-connect. Uh, Tom Galliford has forwarded this along, um, has thoroughly vetted it. Very straightforward and kind of a no-brainer. Um. And he, uh, he included the, uh, information here with what it is on the email.
Well, I guess my question is, is, so when, uh, the fire marshal inspects it, if he finds a deficiency, he enters it into this?
Yes.
And then they follow up on it, or how does it, like, what is, I just want to know the benefit of using this.
Yeah, I think, I think part of it is he can mon, he can monitor the maintenance required, meaning there, there's a automatic thing in the software. It's like a free software program he gets to use.
So it says like, when's the last time it was installed?
Exactly. And then if there's something wrong with it, it'll give you, you've put it in, it'll tell you when maintenance is due. Tell you what follow-up is needed. It's like a, a computer program that monitors everything for him, and it doesn't cost him anything.
So how do they make their money?
They're getting paid from a third party somewhere, probably a grant from the state or something.
Okay, but it's not like a requirement that a commercial business has to be presented to do repairs, right?
No.
It's not like someone saying, we wanna inspect your roof.
No.
Nice.
Nothing like that.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. Um. Okay, any thoughts? Um, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um. Actually, let's move this one, cause this, this might take longer. Um, I'm, yeah. Oh, thank you. Yeah, um, let's just knock it out. So, uh, I move that we authorize the town of Bethel to enter to an agreement with capital tax recovery, subject to the reapproval Town Council. And move to authorize Daniel Lee Carter's first selectman of the town of Bethel to execute the agreement with capital tax recovery and to authorize any other acts or actions as reasonably necessary, including the execution of contract revisions and modifications, which may be deemed appropriate to facilitate the purpose for which the said contract was intended. One second. Okay, so what that is, um, this is the, uh, follow-up of MTS. Um, we have Izzy, our tax assessor online. Izzy, would you like to weigh in?
Yep, I just left you some numbers too, and I think you should have those to see. Um, overall, we, we, we did have municipal tax service and, um, it was during mainly twenty twenty-two, you know, those years when we, it was really, um, essential that we had, um, we had a lot of people coming in from out of state, from out of town, and we really thought we were losing a lot of revenue. So we hired municipal tax services. Um, they went back to eighteen. So they did eighteen through some of twenty-three. Um, overall, we made, um, overall, they picked up one million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in tax. We kept half of that. We've negotiated with, um, with capital tax recovery. We kept fifty percent with MTS. We're gonna keep fifty-five percent with, um, capital tax recovery. So we've got a little better deal there, I think. Um, as us keeping a better percentage of that money. I don't expect it to be that it's gonna make that much money, but I do think that it's time again and we need to hire a company to go out and canvass the town.
Do they have license plate readers or something that read all the files?
Yes. They also check different, they don't use an Accurian, but it's one of those. I forgot the name of the company that they use. So they'll also, they'll go by with the, um, checkers. So they check them on the, the mobile, the cars. They also go at different times. So they will go during the day, they will go at night. MTS predominantly went nighttime. Um, it also helps on the weekends, because that's where we're not able to, in the assessor's office, go out and canvass on the weekends. So that helps that. Um, some of the places, if they can't get into them, say the condos, what they do is they park a car outside of the condos and watch the cars coming in and out. Um, we've also asked them to check by the schools to make sure there are people coming in without estate plates. Uh, so I think that'll help us pick up some of these vehicles that we lose.
How do they, how do they ensure though that people aren't within the time date to transfer registration or, you know, if it's a temporary assignment? Like, how does someone who's basically falsely accused of residing in town, who truly doesn't reside in town, what recourse? And that's my big concern with it is
Correct.
People are supposed to register their cars here, they should register their cars here.
Right.
But what's the recourse? Cause I remember last time there were some complaints about, you know, I, I don't live here. Like, how do we handle that? I'm the girlfriend.
That's what I asked, um, you know, capital recovery is. That was really important about, um, people who went to go visit a family member or a friend or a boyfriend or whatever. People have all rights to come and go whenever they want. I don't wanna get into that trying to say, well, you've been there, you know, three months out of the year. I really want it something that makes concrete sense that I can stand behind. Um, and that's where tax recovery was really pretty good at that. They were, you know, we sat down and talked to them and I felt more comfortable that they will, um, work with me. And if I feel it's something that shouldn't be taxable, I have the final say. We're municipal tax services, I kinda had a, you know, we. municipal tax services, I kind of had a, you know, we had a few little goings.
So you can override their, you can override their decision if they.
I can override their decision.
You could say.
They also don't do it just, you've got to see them, you know, it's got to be consecutive, it's not just one or two visits.
It's not one, like, they'll look for a car over the course of a month in the same location.
Correct, correct. Then they send them a note, and these people now have thirty days to respond to that letter to say, yes, I'm just visiting, or. You know, did I move to the state and, you know, they have ninety days to register. Well, now if it's been, you know, six months, well, you should have registered.
Yeah.
You know, so these.
Yeah, it's important to throw out there, so you guys understand too, the, the genesis of this. We were using MTS. It did get to a point where we felt like they were just getting boyfriend girlfriends. It was a lot of drama. It weren't very, they weren't very nice necessarily, their collection, right? They weren't nice for residents. So that was a problem. I had a lot of complaints. Very difficult to work with, I think, from Izzy's perspective, like, being override something that she believed was wrong. And, um, so we took, we took some time off. We found out about capital taxes recovery through Danbury. They've used it, a couple other towns around half. And Izzy's been, and we've talked about it for some period of time. We interviewed the owner. Um, so this is kind of a long time coming. And I think everything that Izzy's said really makes sense. I'll also say that, you know, we know, like, what, forty-two percent of the people are coming from other towns. So when that happens, it really, it just kind of gets flagged, and they have the opportunity to, to handle within the cells of the other two towns, right? So we end up picking up tax revenue of somebody we may not have found for years. And once we get it, it's on our rolls.
It's on our rolls. So then we have a going forward.
Yeah. So it, it is really important, um, and I just think these, these guys, again, we could do it a year. See how they turn out.
You know, they say that.
I know, just agree. I just think that, you know, we should give fair warning to the residents, because compliance is always better than.
We can put it on the website.
Caught you, you know, say, look, this is coming. We're asking if you come register your car, so.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm, I'm fine with the program.
Yeah, would you like a little more?
Yeah, I just think that it's good to give people fair warning, because like I said, the whole point of this, you know, isn't just to generate revenue, it's to gain compliance with the law, correct?
And we, and we, we'll, we'll put out a campaign to let everybody know it's, it's back.
I'm fine.
Okay.
And you know, I, because I said, I always said, when people move into our town, the last thing you're doing when you're thinking about when you move from, say, New York, is to get your car reregistered. So it just makes us, you know, helps expedite things and get people on the right track.
Izzy, if you override somebody, do we still have to pay them their?
No, I will, I stick to my, I really, um, would fight them. And I would win.
You and I had some conversations when I was in the first selectman's office at the time about that other company.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, and they, I think the biggest thing that we get is a lot of times we have people who have companies. And they have, I have quite a few people, I just had one that called me the other day, um, where they have a company, and I think the other one the other day was in Richfield. So they register their trucks to Richfield because that's where the business is. But the car comes home every night by the owner. And I said, well, it's gotta, you gotta have one, you know, some car's got to be coming home to your house. And they get it once you tell them.
Okay. So we, uh, we do have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? I'll pair mine, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. And motion carries.
And then just for one year.
One year.
One year, yeah.
Renewable if we want to.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry for making you wait. I thought it'd be faster getting to this other. Any questions about what we just did?
A lot of questions.
Okay, um. So, uh, next up, we have. Consideration of a license agreement for outdoor dining adjacent to one eighty-six Greenwood Avenue, contingent on town department approval. So, um, what we have before, so this, first off, this has been kind of a working thing now for a year or so, when Edison Kitchen had the property. And when we were doing all the stuff to kind of make this happen, and of course, the property, uh, property is owned by the same people, but the business has changed. So the important thing to realize is when this all started, uh, there were a lot of requests for an easement there, because town owns the property that gets into the building. However, uh, an easement really isn't appropriate to go with the life of the property. It's more appropriate to the goes to the business or, you know, for the use of the property, which is why we're talking about a license. Um, we have, uh, we have a map at this point too, that shows the, uh, the survey of the actual place. It looks like this is the same setup of the planners that was there before, okay? And now we have a survey map that we just recorded today to actually look at the size of the area. Um, I think the big thing is, once we do a motion, um, I'll include things like, uh. Well, I, I actually have the motion here, and I can go with it. It's basically given the opportunity for the town to do everything needed, including having ADA officer and things like that. Um, would you like me to read the motion at this point, or do you want to have discussion?
Motion.
Okay. Okay. We'll do it that way. So, uh, I move that we au- uh, excuse me. I move that we authorize the town to enter into a conditional lease, excuse me, license agreement for the sidewalk patio dining, subject to conditions that the area is delineated on a map, has a layout that is approved by the town's ADA officer, may be renewed, amended, and terminated in the discretion of the town, includes terms and conditions acceptable to the town, including hours of operation and no outdoor broadcasting system. Complies with all applicable regulations, ordinances, and laws, and is subject to the review and approval of P and Z, Public Works Health and Town Council.
May I just ask, this is. We should probably, the section is going to run to the business, so we should probably, not where the address, but the business name.
Okay.
And it is better.
Yeah, so conditional license agreements with Veteran Bethel?
Yes, and it is one eight six. Greenwood Avenue, is that correct address?
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment? Thank you.
Again, when you said broadcast systems, are you talking about, uh, music out there, or?
Well, what is it about, because, because, Mel, you put broadcast.
I did, I did. I had done a little bit of research.
We, we have loud live music there.
I had done a little bit of research on some of the other sidewalk dining, dining. Rec file here.
And I can hear it in my house sometimes.
Yeah.
Just find where that.
That's, that's not change here.
It's here. I think, um, you know, knowing that people have apartments up there, and might, you know, at certain hours, we're going to go to sleep, that it was, uh, it was like. It was a PA system kind of thing, um, that they were concerned about.
Did we have this in the last agreement?
Um, we didn't get that far in the last agreement. We didn't have a map and.
So we just let them do it?
Yeah, that was, uh, resolved from COVID.
Okay.
A written statement they were looking for stating, actually, no public address system or outside music. In this case, it was or outside music. So I think.
I, I don't, I'm not.
It's all a matter of maybe degree.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we strike that, to be honest, because we, uh, we allow, they just have to comply with the noise regulations of anybody else. I think prohibiting outside music there, when they can do it around the corner of their property, they can enable it.
It's, you know, all up to the discretion and obviously, location is, you know, and how you may affect your neighbors and so forth. It's all a degree too. If you layer your zac or your musical, and it's bedtime or after bedtime, so, uh, maybe we can just put things like that.
So, so what I would, what I recommend, and I'm, I'm going to reread the motion, if that's acceptable, you guys. Um, I move we authorize the town to enter into a conditional license agreement with Veteran Bethel for sidewalk patio dining, subject to the conditions that the area is delineated on a map, has a layout that is approved by the town's ADA officer, may be renewed, amended, and terminated in the discretion of the town, includes the terms and conditions acceptable to the town, including hours of operations, and complies with all applicable regulations, ordinances, and laws, and is subject to review and approval of P and Z, Public Works Health and Town Council.
I mean, it, it says right in there that we can amend it. If you guys decide to start having like heavy metal concerts on the sidewalk and people complain, we can amend it.
When you're like eating dinner.
We don't, we don't have a problem with that, but if we start getting complaints, you know, we can come back to you and say, listen, you got it.
Yeah. With the hours there, I really tend to be considering vacation closes about that time, uh. Weekends, and you know, if someone is just about to finish their meal, and it's, I don't know, ten fifteen, I almost be like, okay. Get the food in time.
I don't think, I don't think the police department is going to be like.
No, I don't think, we, we've not had issues.
We'll not go after those hours.
Yeah.
What, what times the bar opens, hold up?
Uh, bar? I mean, so far, it's just one third week around eleven.
She makes killer drinks.
Uh, we, we. We had dinner.
You told me.
I went with Mary and all the other people from town hall as well.
Is it a Kula or?
I didn't. Made water.
Okay.
All right, and my girlfriend liked the drink. Just if there's some room between the, the clock planter and that, uh, first, uh, their planter, so people can walk in between there and not near the roads.
Yeah, and they, um, they, I think, where the license been ADA. Um, I don't think did it today, but I, I showed them the pictures the other day, and told the guys, I said, put cones down, and get Tommy Keen out there and fix it. I mean, they need to be fixed, but, but that's a whole nother thing. It's right in front of your place, you have the little tree.
The trees.
Stop, stops. Well, put some cones out there so folks don't trip on it. Okay, okay. With that, then I'll, uh, I'll pair mine along with him, say aye. Aye. And if others, motion carries. Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, once we've been trying to work this out, it took a while for that to get finished up. So anyway, um. Okay, so. I move, uh, let's, let's, first off, let's say consideration of a license agreement for A King Wooster Street for use of town property for a non-permanent structure. So this is a conversation we've had of the property right behind town hall over here, where the gentleman has asked to put the shed. Uh, he did some approvals of the property. Um, he was actually right or wrong, given permission by, uh, a department in town to remove the trees. And they cleaned it up, and it looks great. The issue was, because of the way the property is, it's hard to put a shed on there that wouldn't be on the edge of a hill or a berm. And he'd like to be able to use it, you know, closer to the curve. Um, when we talked about this, this was a license agreement, it can't, like, if he moves, shed goes. There's some camp, you know, just let anybody have it permanently.
Does it interfere with any of our future plans for parking?
Right now, no. And I'll be honest, I can't really see us. Thank you, take care. I think, I think we'd be hard pressed to get a lot of spots out of there, in the back, and he's had, he's for a lot of spots, probably not done. It could be done someday, but, but again, I think it's just very important that we make a license, it was an easement. It's very clear. Sheds there, he put, yeah, he put it up, because, I mean, we talked about this kind of briefly.
Is it on footings, or is it?
It's non-permanent, I think it just says.
No, it just says on skids.
I think so.
So there's no.
Well, whatever there, he has to take. Like, you know, it's non-permanent. It has to go when he goes. Um.
And it's on our property though.
It's on our property. Yeah, it's, it's definitely, well, he leaves it. He leaves, we want it, fuck that up. In a heartbeat.
Yeah, I mean, he's saying that's a hardship, because it's on the hillside, he can't prop it up on one side?
Yeah, he felt like getting it in there and actually, because he brought it in, they sat it down, that it wouldn't sit because of where they're. Three feet? I mean, oh, no, no, I mean, well, it's, it's in from our property street, but it's fully on trap property. We all probably only have a piece there that's twenty feet, maybe fifteen feet wide. So we could, if we ever wanted to come in for a parking spot, we could, but we'd probably get like, you know, butts.
So he was given permission to clear that area.
He was given permission by a town official to get rid of the trees. And, which was a bone of contention in town, it probably should never have happened that way. Or there's, but he did, he cleaned it up, it looked terrible. Took the fence out, cleaned it up, the property looks a hell of a lot better. But the way it kind of came around was a little sideways. Um, but this is, you know, given where we are now. I think it's, I think it's a good partnership with the neighbor that will probably never use the property, but, yeah. So.
I don't know why you can't jack it up through peers on the other side.
Part of where, I, I, I know, but it's, it's really not that big of a thing to do the license and let go. I mean, we said no. I mean, I, I think, given the way it's. Um, okay, so.
He's been a neighbor for a while, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the guy in the red house?
Yeah.
That gave us, to see the, what's property owner that gave the town a hard time when the chiller was out there?
I don't know. I don't know.
Oh, wait, this is, this is a private residence or a business?
Private residence. He's a, he's a contractor, he's a contractor of the house. Yeah, it's private, and it's private, it doesn't do, it's not a business. I don't know about any other issues. I've never heard. It seems like.
Is there a motion on the table yet?
Um, no, it's a clear.
Make a motion on the table. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. We have a second.
I'll take it again for discussion.
Okay, I mean, I. Honestly.
I just like to see where it is. I mean, it's, you can't see it from here.
Oh, yeah, it's, can't see it that side. I, I thought you knew where it was, Rich.
Um, no, I don't, that's.
So.
But, but you're saying that the full, the full shed is on town property?
Yes, it's sitting right there. Because he, 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 listen, we've been talking about it. He came in here, honestly, about it. I mean, we even talked about it. We've we've been talking about it for, I don't know, sixty months.
He didn't know it was on town property?
No, he, no, 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 he asked, he asked, but we couldn't move quick enough. He's like, dude, my shed's being delivered. And they just, they went ahead and did it, because what happened was, his guy started going out there and messing around town property. We went out and stopped him and said, whoa, 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 you can't do anything. He's coming in, and he's asked, he's been a good neighbor about it, but the shed arrived, and he just stuck it there. So we could just say no, and they'll have to take the shed out, that's fine. But I, but, but right now, we have a shed that's on town property. I'd rather just get him a license.
Are we putting ourselves in, are we setting a precedent now where if someone else lives next to a park that sides, I'm going to plop a shed on there? Are we setting a precedent where it could be viewed as capricious and arbitrary if we don't approve someone else's permit after they do it?
Well, I guess that's always a risk. Uh, that, you know, somebody will pick up on something and say, well, you hate, you know, frequent hitter, we didn't there. Um. I mean, I, I guess that, that could be made anywhere. I think we're. Um, you know, obviously, you need to look and make a decision here, but.
Well, I'm asking for a legal opinion. Like, are you okay with the license? Like, you think we're opening ourselves up, or do you think we're okay with it? What do you think?
I. Yeah, we prefer not to have things on town property that shouldn't be on town property. I think we do with history here. I'm not really too familiar with it, but, um.
Since, how, how long has it been there, Dan?
Um.
Several months?
Few months. Yeah, because we.
Two weeks.
Okay, all right. Well, we, right now.
I think you should take a look and see and decide how you want to go with it. Um, again, I don't really know all the, all the history of it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the mo- the motion is on the table. The motion's on the table to table. The motion's on the table, okay. Um. Any further discussion on that, I'd be on.
Only other thing is, if, if you decide to have it there, the better thing to do is to have an agreement, because then we can save things like.
Yeah.
You know, thirty day notice to, to, to take it out. You can't modify it, you can't change it, you, um, can't do anything further on the property.
So we're just voting on, for you to draft an agreement here? Or do you already have?
No, I, I had something similar for some, uh, another situation.
So, yeah, we're voting on her to draft the agreement, but also with some things, you know, I was going to say thirty day notice. I mean, there's a couple things we can put in the terms in our discussion. But I really, I'm just trying to move, because I don't want something sitting there on town property for. I mean, I've been top of the bet to get this on for a few months, but we've been.
I, I know, I know, they can't wait two more weeks.
Well, she can work on the agreement then a few weeks.
Okay, work on the agreement, and then.
Okay.
You know, I.
You call the question?
I, I'm, yeah, I, you know, I'm viable to have it, but I like to look at it. Of certops, sir.
Yeah. Okay, with that, we have a motion on the table, table. All in favor of tabling until the next board?
You got a second? You got a second for the?
He seconded.
I seconded it.
Yes, he seconded it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, Joe? I'm going to give you this one. I don't ever forget. Okay, Richie? You got your victory from me. I, it's fine, I gave it to you. Like I said, aye, let's move on.
Okay. I'll, and I'll, I'll say aye just for Rich.
Oh, okay, there you go. It's unanimous, next time.
There you go. All right. Um, I love it. Okay, so next up, um, we have to set a time and we have to set a time for a special, a date and time for a special town meeting for the sale of nineteen Trowbridge Drive.
You, you put something.
Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. I thank you. Consideration of approval of sale of nineteen Trowbridge. So, um, I mean, we had the public hearing just before this. Uh, nobody came. It was myself, Mary, Melanie and Janice. That was it. Uh, I mean, obviously this is a no brainer. So with that, I move that the Board of Second approves the sale of nineteen Trowbridge Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
You wanna see?
Mel, do I have to do, um, do I have to do any thing? No, because now it goes to town meeting. So I don't have to do contract and all that sort of stuff. That's in the town meeting. Right? Approving me to be able to sign everything? Is that the town meeting, correct?
Um. No, I would, I would say, why don't we just operate you to sign anything having to do with the sale?
Okay.
Assuming, uh, subject to, obviously it's. Subject to, subject to that.
Okay.
Do we need to put the sale price on too or no? Are we holding that back?
So that'll be the town meeting.
Oh, that's at the town meeting.
It does have to get approved by town meetings.
Yes.
So, um, I, so, um. Okay, so we already did that. So, uh, I move the authorized gaming carders for some of the town of Bethel to execute any agreements and authorize any acts or actions reasonable necessary for the sale of nineteen Trowbridge. Uh, yeah. That'd be two approval of the town meeting.
Second.
Okay, with all that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next, um. So what did we, what did we finally decide? We decided on the twenty-third at six thirty PM, meeting room A.
That's next week.
Yep. It's right before the RTC meeting on Tuesday night in this room.
It's Tuesday or Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
Oh, that's a Wednesday? Wait, what's the twenty-third?
It's Wednesday.
Yes. It's Wednesday. Wednesday, the twenty-third, reference Tuesday the twenty-second. So with that, um. I'm gonna put the whole thing here. So let's see if we get this right. Um, I move that we uh, schedule a special town meeting for Wednesday, April twenty-third at six thirty PM in Town Hall Meeting Room A for the sale of nineteen Trowbridge Drive and to consider a resolution that the tax on motor vehicle and personal property be collected in one or more than one installments.
I did, but, um.
What was that? What was that last?
Okay, so.
One or more than one?
One or more than one installment, so that's.
So under state law, you have to determine whether it's one or more than one.
Right.
Um.
What's wrong with the motion, Mel?
Um, I think you first had to amend the agenda to add that and then vote on it.
We did, we did.
Oh, I, you, you're saying add that to the consideration of the town meeting?
I thought we did.
No, no, no. I, I see where she's going.
I think you just add to the agenda.
That's, that the agenda item is for good things.
And then.
Okay.
Okay.
So with that, I withdraw my motion. And what I do, what I'll say is that, um, but, but anyway, I, I don't think we necessarily need to do it that way because anytime we're setting a date time for the special, eh, let's just do it. Um, I move that after the agenda item for setting the time of a special town meeting, or I should say with the agenda item, that we also add a resolution that the tax on motor vehicle and personal property be collected in one or more than one installments.
Second.
Okay, with that, uh, all in favor?
Uh, wait, I'm still not clarified about one or more than one.
So let me explain.
I thought we, we only collect them on one.
No, what we do, we do, but what we have to do is this is like, what is the notice for the meeting? Is that we have to make a determination?
Oh, all right. So at the town meeting, we'll make the determination.
Yeah, and so, so you're saying what happened in the last time meeting, the motion was just a little bit off the way we spoke it.
Yeah.
And that's.
And it says one or more, and it should have said one.
Yes, right before meeting here. It's Wednesday, the twenty-third, six thirty PM here. Well, we haven't said that yet, but that's what we'll be doing. Does that work?
I don't, I may have a word function, but as long as she's gonna be here, it's gonna be okay. It's gonna be.
Well, it'll be a town meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah, all right. I, I just, I, the twenty-third is just stuck in my brain for some reason. I'll, tomorrow when I get to work.
Okay. So, so what we've done or what we're doing with this, this motion is to add this to the agenda, like, uh, amend that item to add that.
Yes.
Okay, so with that, all in favor of amending the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. With that, I move that we set the date and time, excuse me, I move that we set the time. Well, I'm losing it. I move that we schedule a special town meeting for April twenty-third at six thirty PM in Town Hall Meeting Room A to consider the sale of nineteen Trowbridge Drive and a resolution that the tax on motor vehicle and personal property be collected in one or more than one installment.
Second.
Okay, I think we got it. Right, Mel, are you feeling good? Give us a motion thing. All right, with that, I'm gonna try mine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion finally carries. Oh, wow. I move that we uh, approve the tax refunds, the amount of two thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty cents to overpaying the taxes. Any, any uh, discussion?
No.
Say none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, we have before us a approval of fair housing resolution. I'm not gonna make the. I should make the town council. So this has to be done every year, just so everybody understands. So I'm just gonna re get, uh, Mel, can we approve a motion without, without you just saying? Off this last minute, okay. Here we go. Um, Town Hall Bethel Fair Housing Resolution. Whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice and whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, committal or status, or national origin, be given equal access to all housing related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing locations and and whereas Connecticut fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity or expression, be given equal access to all housing related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location and whereas the town of Bethel is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be supplemented by any affirmative action public, uh, public, excuse me, pub, publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Bethel hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing and enjoy all other housing related services of their choice on a nondiscriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. And to be further resolved that the chief executive officer of the town of Bethel or his or her designated representative is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the town of Bethel and for advising such person of the right to file a complaint with the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities or the US Department of Housing and Urban Development or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, legal services or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities. This will be adopted by the town of Bethel, signed by Daniel Carter for its. Do I have a motion to accept the president's? Okay, one second. All right, any questions on this?
No.
Yeah.
Did we do the tax refunds?
We did.
You did, okay. Very fast.
We did.
You were lawyering it.
Okay, so with that, then we do have a motion on the table. Um, I'll carry mine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Uh, finally, little motion for adjourned. Second, you can second it. All in favor? Aye, we stand adjourned at eight PM.